Good evening. My name is Brian Lynch. I'm the superintendent of schools here in Middleborough. And tonight I'll be acting as moderator pro tem for the election of the permanent chairperson of the school committee. Uh, I would like to begin by stating that, that uh, on the April third, two thousand twenty-one elections, Rich Young was reelected to the school committee and Ezekiel Zeke Lewis is, was elected to the school committee also. Congratulations to both of you. Um, good to see you again, Rich, and, and great introducing Zeke as a new member of the school committee. So congratulations. Uh, I would like to move on again, uh, as my job is to elect or have the, a new chairperson of the Middleborough School Committee elected tonight. Um, and I would take nominations from the board, the school committee board.
I nominate.
I nominate Richard.
Rich Young has been nominated. Is there a second? Second by Rich Oakley. Is there any discussion?
Any other nominations, right?
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none and hearing none. Is there any discussion on the nomination of Rich Young? Mr. Oakley.
Actually, I'll let Greg go first because he made the nomination. Go for it, Greg.
Okay. No, I just want, I mean, we say this every year, Rich does so much uh, for the community. He uh, spends so much time that it really makes sense for him to continue as long as he's willing. Um, I think he's done a fantastic job. He's been integral in the building committee. Uh, you know, he's, he's helped us understand the budget process, uh, negotiations. I learned negotiations with him this year. And it's just been, you know, there's just nobody I could see. I mean, I think it would be a, to my personal opinion, I can't see anybody else doing it. So that's my nomination.
Mr. Oakley, your second.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to build off of that, uh, what Greg said, um, being the vice chair this past year. I, I got a chance to see an awful lot more of, uh, what Mr. Young does as, as chair of the committee and uh, continue to just be impressed and surprised by just how much there is to do. Um, you know, outside of the typical research that we do for our meetings and reading the materials, but Mr. Young's going all day, every day. Um, and I, I agree with Greg. I, I think he's, he's absolutely the best one for this. Um, unless, unless anyone else is interested in it, but I'd probably still vote for Rich.
Are there any comments, any other comments by any other member of the board? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a vote. Uh, Mr. Oakley.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And Mr. Young.
I will abstain, but thank you very much, everybody. I really appreciate it.
Okay, uh, we have four yays and one abstention. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Young. You continue on as the chair of the Middleborough School Committee.
Thank you very much, everybody.
And the meeting is yours.
Thank you. I do want to say, um, I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. Um, this will be the start of my, um, seventh year on the committee. As I said before, I loved every minute of it. Um, and I appreciate working with each and every one of you because you make, being on this committee really easy. Um, not from the aspect of that things are simple and everybody votes the same way, but from the aspect of that you all do your homework and work hard um, and are constantly helping out to make sure that, um, things are done for the, for the school. So I really appreciate that. And, uh, Zeke, I would, um, also, uh, make the same comments as the superintendent. Welcome to our committee. Um, I think you'll find that everybody here is hardworking and very welcoming. Um, and, uh, we, we look forward to you being a part of this committee. So congratulations on your election. And with that, uh, the next item on our agenda is a vice chair and the chair would entertain motions, uh, for vice chair. Mr. Stevens, I saw your hand first.
I, I nominate Mr. Rich Oakley for vice chair.
Thank you. Um, is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Janess. Um, is there any other nominations for vice chair? Uh, Mr. Oakley?
I just wanted to ask, is any, anyone else interested in it? I'd be happy to support anyone who's interested.
That's all. And with the lack of other, um, mentions, Mr., I, I will close the nominations. Uh, we have one nomination for Mr. Oakley. Uh, so Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, I want to do discussion. I, I just want to say, you know, Rich has brought a lot of energy to the committee. Um, he's kind of our, you know, he, he goes after things. So I do think he did a nice job last year. So I appreciate him. We'll be willing to do it again.
Thank you. Anybody else? I, I would like to point out too, that, um, the two previous vice chairs were both you, Mr. Stevens and you, Ms. Janess. And, and everyone sort of has really done a great job, especially to learn the ins and outs. I know Ms. Janess has taken over the, um, the budget, uh, subcommittee and, uh, Greg, you have really helped out with the, um, uh, negotiations. So I appreciate everything that you've all done. Um, with that, um, the motion, we closed it, um, we'll go around to vote for, uh, the motion, which is Mr. Oakley. Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Aye.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Oakley.
I'll abstain.
And the chair will vote aye. Thank you.
And, um, Mr. Chair, if it's okay, um, I just wanted to say thank you and thanks for the comments and, um, I appreciate the opportunity to, to serve alongside Chair Young and, and, um, just gonna try to learn as much as I can, uh, in this year and um, so I can serve the committee in the event of, uh, you know, Mr. Young not being here at a meeting or, or being able to pick up, um, if where he left off if he needs me. So thank you for your vote of confidence and, uh, I won't let you down.
Thank you very much, Mr. Oakley. Next, the chair will entertain a motion to appoint Christine Weston Albert, the secretary to the school committee.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion? Um, Zeke, since you're, since you're new, this is a usual, um, piece. Christine is our, she does our minutes and uh, to all our meetings and that is a, a, a very, um, that's been here since the entire time I've been a member of the committee. Um, so we appreciate all that, um, Christine does for us. Um, any further discussion? Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, um, you know, reading through the minutes that, that we usually approve in the consent agenda, they always seem very accurate to me. And as, as someone myself who is a secretary for another group, it's not easy to do that and to do the, the level of detail that she captures in the minutes. So, um, I, I'm so happy that she chooses to stay doing this with us and I happily vote aye to appoint her to that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, um, this will require a vote. Mr. Oakley.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Aye.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The next item, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised Eleventh Edition as the procedural guide for conducting the school committee meetings.
So moved.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Oakley.
How, how newly was it revised?
Um, it is the newest, no, it's the newest, uh, version of Robert's Rules. Um, I always check before this meeting to make sure the, uh, that we're using the right number in our motion. So there is not a twelfth edition currently. We are still on the eleven.
All right, thank you.
No problem. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, that requires a vote. Mr. Oakley.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Hi.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, with that, um, the chair will entertain a motion to set the, the second and fourth Thursday of the month as our meeting dates, provided obviously that in the past we've changed them and a lot of people noticed, but those will be our normal meeting dates. Do I hear that as a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Again, that's our usual term. We're not on the fourth and, um, second and fourth this month because that would interfere with school vacation. So that's why we moved it. But that will be our normal. We usually do it for the entire year, um, at some point, and then we make a decision, uh, probably closer to, uh, June about what we do for the summertime. And hopefully we'll have a real summer where we can not have to meet all the time. Uh, but any further discussion or comments? Mr. Stevens.
So that means our next meeting will be the second. We're not meeting next week, right? Because this is beginning.
Correct.
So the next meeting will be the second Thursday in May.
Correct.
Thank you.
It's hard to believe it's May already.
I know.
Um, any further comments or questions? Hearing none and seeing none, uh, Mr. Oakley.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, next would be, um, the ability to sign warrants. I would like to add that, uh, during the pandemic, we've allowed all members to sign the warrants in case there was a problem. I would like to keep that if that's okay. So the chair would entertain a motion to allow all members to sign the warrants. Greg, you were unmute, so I have to.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
And so just so everyone's clear, the warrants are our bills. Um, what happens is the, um, normally I go in, review the bills, sign them. Um, and then they come to a school committee for a vote. They're usually listed on our consent agenda unless somebody has a problem and wishes to talk about them. Um, and that's, that's how we handle voting. Uh, during the pandemic, we've allowed for everybody to be able to sign those. So if something happened to one of us, it wouldn't tie up the bill process. Um, it would make sure that anyone could do it. So with that, uh, Mr. Oakley.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Hi.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, the next item is the subcommittees. So in the past practice, I will send everybody a list of subcommittees. Um, and then you will send me what you would like to be on. Um, and then I'll try to make that happen. Um, so I'll be sending that out within the next week or two. Uh, and finally, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to end the re, to adjourn the reorganization of the school committee.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Oakley.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Hi.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we will go back to our regular agenda. And so as soon as that keys up for me, we'll start. Um, I would remind everybody that we handle public comment either through the chat or through the email, uh, both of which are monitored today. Um, if people have particular questions, they are more than welcome to ask them or write them out. Uh, we'll clearly give people enough time and people, of course, are also allowed to ask, uh, their questions when a presentation's going on, if they have questions about it, we, we really try to make sure we answer those. Um, with that, we do not have a student report tonight. Natalia, uh, texted me at the last minute. She is on her way to North Carolina for a family trip, so we wish her well. Um, so with that, we have the MAA co-presidents who will be joining us. And so I'll ask Sean to have the presidents join us. Oh, you're on mute, Brian.
You're good, you're good. I don't believe the presidents will be attending tonight's meeting.
Well, that makes two quick agenda items, so that works out pretty. Does anyone, a member of the school committee wish to mention anything? Uh, Mr. Stevens, go right ahead.
So I mean, I know we've talked about this, you know, a lot, but both my, my daughters, uh, I think my oldest daughter got, my middle daughter got to tour the new high school, I think, yesterday. Um, but they're both very excited. Uh, they, they think it's a, they can't wait to get in there after a vacation.
Thank you. Now, we should point out that sadly today is the last day of the old high school, uh, for students. Um, so it's sort of the end of an era there.
After fifty years.
So it's kind of crazy. Does anybody else have anything that they wish to bring up? So, um, Zeke, I will tell you one thing about the meeting, um, especially with regards to everybody. Everyone uses a lot of abbreviations here. Um, so because we're used to it and we've been doing it for a while. So please feel free to stop us anytime you need to and ask any question that you have. Um, we sort of get in the habit of it at times, so um, I just want to make sure that everyone understands. So, and it is perfectly fine to ask questions. So with that, I'm gonna turn the, it over to the superintendent's report. So, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to you and to Rich Oakley, uh, chair and vice chair this evening. Um, good evening, everyone and those folks watching from the public. Uh, I would like to clarify though, when we start here, that, that, uh, at the bottom of our agenda tonight, we do have a note that says the next school committee meeting is May thirteenth. I'd just like to clarify whether we're gonna go the second and fourth or first and third. Um, and, and if that is the correct date or if that's the incorrect date, because we want to get the word out to folks, uh, sooner than later, whether we're gonna go with, uh, the, the second week and fourth week in May or the first week and the third week.
We're gonna go second and fourth, Brian. That's what we've been doing, right? That's what we have been doing.
So that would, that would be the, the first meeting in May would be May thirteenth.
Correct, thirteenth and twenty-seventh.
Second meeting would be the twenty-seventh. Okay, just, just, just point of clarification. I, I think we had said, we talked about the sixth a few minutes ago, so I wanted to make sure that, that, uh, we had that right. So that is on the bottom of the agenda and that's the way we'll go forward with the calendar. So thank you. I just wanted to clarify that before we get going. The first item on my report tonight is a COVID nineteen, nineteen update. Obviously, we're in our second week of full return for K through eight. It's going very well. Uh, you know, with the teachers, uh, students, everyone seems to be getting along fine and, and working through this. Uh, kids are excited to be together. Obviously, we have twice as many kids in the building and, uh, but it's, it's going very well and we're very pleased to have all the students back in. Um, I know that I've spoken with a number of parents who are very pleased to have those students back in, um, on a full-time basis. Uh, we'll be working on a, a plan for the high school. The state was supposed to announce exactly when their, their expectation to have high school kids back. Obviously, we've been delayed because of our situation moving into a brand-new school. Um, easier to move in kids gradually, but we would anticipate that at some point in May, we would have our, those students in cohorts one, two, and three at least would be in the high school. There'd be some difficulties with cohort four because cohort four involves, uh, edgenuity, ed mentum classes, AP classes outside of the realm of the high school, online classes with Massa Soyet, um, et cetera. So the, a lot of the, uh, remote classes to high school are sort of classes that are fixed um, from outside sources. So we'll have updates for you at our next meeting, uh, in terms of exactly where we're going and probably ahead of that, certainly with notifications to families and parents and exactly what our plans are. Um, we have many discussions about this with the administration of high school, um, and they do have a plan moving forward. So we'll be announcing those plans in the near future. So in terms of COVID nine, uh, nineteen updates, our numbers are trending downward in the school system. Again, we had a little bit of a spike, but our numbers are trending downward. Our, our digital dashboard tomorrow, uh, the numbers will be much lower than they were last week. I know our community went into the red. I'm not sure of the report today. I didn't see the Thursday report from the state on whether we went back into yellow or we're still in the red, um, in the community, but at, at the school level. Um, it, please check out our digital dashboard. It's on our homepage. Our COVID nineteen dashboard, it will tell you exactly where we stand in what schools and what the numbers of students that, that have contracted the virus are. Um, so that, that would, that is still running and will continue to run and be updated every Friday. So, uh, that's my COVID nineteen update. Uh, if there are any questions from any of the members of the committee?
Right, we did have a, we did have a question from the, um, the chat, um, which I think applies to that. Will the fifth graders be getting a tour of the middle school as they normally would and?
We're gonna try to accommodate that. Um, we can transport kids now on buses and, uh, we can try to do that, uh, and make the space work. Uh, I'll have to have discussions with the elementary principals and the middle school principal. That is not something that we have discussed yet to Mrs. Sicillo, but it's an excellent question. I will put it on my notes for tomorrow, discuss tomorrow's discussion with principals and, um, thank you for that input because that's not something we've been so focused on getting them back, um, that we haven't talked about, a lot about moving them on yet. But, uh, but thank you for your input. And we'll certainly, uh, we'll certainly get on that and certainly have information coming out for the next meeting. I will put it on my report for next meeting.
Go ahead, Mr. Oakley.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Lynch, I hope you don't mind the vague question, but it helps to get my head into what's going on. Um, so obviously I really appreciated the very detailed plan that you guys had for, for bringing the kids back. And I just wondered what, what's something that went better than you expected? And what's something that was a little more difficult, um, than expected?
I, I think, Mr. Oakley and to the rest of the, the committee, uh, I think that the transportation piece, um, and the traffic piece were really concerning in terms of getting the kids to school and from school when we're, we had kids that were basically on half buses with half population. Uh, been amazed by that. It, it's, it's operated pretty well. Uh, the, I know that the elementary and middle school folks were concerned with the number of cars that were coming in on cohorts. And they were thinking maybe that would be doubled. Uh, but I think a lot more people are relying on that bus transportation, uh, and that has worked out well. So I think that's worked out well. Um, I think we had to rearrange things with, with cafeteria tables and lunches. The MKG is using the Berklin cafeteria. We had to rearrange that sort of last minute because we wanted to do this six feet, uh, social distancing when the kids take off the mask and we weren't quite there, so we had to make some alterations on the day before. And I certainly thank, uh, head custodian Ron Leonard and, um, Kelly Vieira, uh, a, a former teacher for helping out and, and Lisa White for helping out as the principal and working that out. So so that, those sort of last minute, making sure we're doing measurements and making sure we're the six feet, uh, whenever students take off their masks. Uh, I think the tent idea went better than I thought it might because I did, wasn't sure would it be able to get tents. But we do have tents at, at the MEK. Uh, we have them at the MKG and we have them at the HBB. So, uh, that, that, I mean, that's worked out better, better than I thought. I didn't know if we'd get bitters. And we ended up getting three interested parties and one solid one. Um, so so there were some things that went well and some things that didn't go so well, but, uh, you know, we can probably, I, I can ask that question of the principals too, and, and we've had conversations, uh, in general, but we could certainly report back on exactly and have a sort of a litany of things that maybe did go well and some things that we could have done better. There's no doubt about it, as with everything, but.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And, and thank you again for all the work that you guys have been doing to make this go smoothly.
Other questions for the superintendent about the COVID nineteen plan? Uh, Brian, I do have one question, uh, well, one comment that was in the chat. It was why combine all cohorts mid-May in a brand-new building? Seniors have a week or two and then the rest of the students have a month. It doesn't make sense to change families' working schedule for one month.
And that's, that's input that we can, we can look at and, and Mr. Brandy can look at, look, look at as we move forward. We've had folks on the other end of that argument too, saying why not get them all back together? We have a big, beautiful high school. Um, the reason we couldn't move as many kids into the high school was that we had all those interior rooms that did not have the appropriate ventilation. Now we have a school that does have the appropriate ventilation. The idea would be, would be to get as many students back in there as possible to make it, you know, feel like school again for them and give them that experience moving forward. So I, with, to Melissa Tulane, we certainly will take that under advisement, uh, become part of the discussion as we move forward. Um, and we also have the factor that if the state says the expectation is you're bringing kids back into the school, then there's not a lot we can do about it. So there's a number of factors that will, that will play into this.
Greg, I saw you had your hand up, so go right ahead.
Yeah, I was just, I haven't seen anything from the state. Is there a new, uh, any schedule for high schools?
They have not. And I was on a call with the commissioner yesterday afternoon and he has not announced anything on high schools yet. He promised it would be there in April. Uh, now we're mid-April and we don't have anything yet. So he was talking about mid-May. That, that was his expectation. That's what he said in the meeting yesterday. So, but nothing in writing yet, none, nothing in guidance yet from them. Um, but I would expect, from what he said, that there will be something that was gonna say, we expect high schools in Massachusetts, uh, if you don't have a pretty darn good reason not to, um, to, and if we were still in the old high school, we would have a real good reason not to bring the cohorts in, back in together because of that interior room situation. But being the new one, uh, we are set up where we can, for the most part, bring most of the kids back. Like I said, the online students, the online academy, we may not be able to put them in. A lot of them are, are doing independent work uh, with universities, colleges and, and AP classes and things such as that, ed mentum and edgenuity outside sources. So.
Any other questions for the superintendent about COVID? Then please continue, Brian.
Okay, um, this evening I, we have a number of guests, um, that are, are local folks that work hard in different departments uh, and that have some updates for you tonight. Um, I promised you that you'd see Meg Quirk. She usually arrives for an annual report to us. Uh, this has been a particularly challenging year, uh, but one in which the Family Resource Center has stepped up. Uh, and Meg Quirk's gonna tell us all about her year i- in the Family Resource Center. Um, and she's a very important part of the school district and we welcome her. As you know, in my first year, uh, this was a, a project that was brought on and a recommendation that was brought on by the HBB, uh, PTA and school council saying, boy, would it be a great idea if we had a family resource person, uh, at our school and in our district. Um, and it started off as something that they were willing to pay half for a half salary and then the district stepped up with the other half. As you know, those of you who are here and those of you who may remember, um, and since then, uh, it became a full-time position and the, the, the position is paid for out of the Title I grant. And it's our plan to continue that, uh, for a good long time because we find it of incredible value to the district. Um, I would just say that the Mass Association of School Superintendents are very interested in what we're doing with the Family Resource Center. They actually asked us to put a presentation together, uh, for their summary executive institute. So, uh, and that was last year. But they've asked us again saying, listen, we'd really like you to come back. So, uh, Meg Quirk is here. So welcome, Meg. Great seeing you tonight and, and, uh, introduce Meg Quirk to the Middleborough School Committee once again. Welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Um, thank you, Mr. Lynch, for your introduction and, and good evening, everyone. And thank you for your time. This is something I look forward to every year. I really look forward to sharing an update on what we're doing here on the Family Resource Center. So I do have a slide presentation for you. Um, so again, my name is Megan Quirk with the Middleborough Family Resource Center. Um, for those that might be, um, tuned in here and, and might not be familiar with the Family Resource Center, I'd just love to share a little bit about what the Family Resource Center is. So we, um, we launched the, the FRC back in two thousand and fifteen in the fall. Um, and the FRC's goal is to engage and serve the families of Middleborough who want to become informed about local resources and want to become connected with local providers. The FRC works diligently to establish and maintain relationships with community partners in order to share accurate information about the services that they provide. The FRC also refers caregivers directly to said providers. Next slide, please. So just a little selection of the areas that the FRC, um, you know, uh, serves families. Nutrition is a big one and, um, I will talk more about nutrition in a few, but, uh, with respect to nutrition, if families are experiencing food insecurity, they can reach out to me. I do work with families on a daily basis with a focus on food insecurity or connecting with resources around food. So I might refer a family to Chloe over at WIC if the family is age-appropriate for that, the children are age-appropriate for that. Um, I might refer a family over to Ray at St. Vincent de Paul's Food Pantry. They're amazing there. And I also send people there because they also have a wonderful outreach program to help people with things other than food. Um, I might also refer families over to Tim at, on the Salvation Army. Not a lot of people know about Salvation Army in Middleborough, but it's another wonderful resources for food voucher, for clothing vouchers. They help with the Good Neighbor Energy Fund if people don't qualify for fuel assistance. So those are some of the areas that I, you know, we might refer a family or caregiver to if they're looking for help with food insecurity. I do have a snack program as well, which I've talked about and I started in two thousand and sixteen and I'll talk more about how, um, the, the snack program has developed and evolved over the years. With respect to housing and utilities, this is definitely another big one. Um, right now, things are, you know, coming, coming at us. So my, my role really is a, as a liaison to the experts. So there's so much that changes that I really just need to keep a pulse on. Who is, you know, doing what in the world of housing and making sure people aren't, who are, um, experiencing homelessness or at risk, are at risk for becoming emergency homeless, um, that we are connecting and helping to prevent that, um, very quickly, as well as making sure people understand shut-offs and how that's going to cha- change on May first for our Middleborough community. Um, so again, I'll refer families to Joe at the, um, Housing Authority, Kathy Ficini down at Housing Solutions, um, I'll refer people to South Shore Community Action Council for fuel assistance applications, as well as Maureen over at the COA. Who will help, who can also help people with the fuel assistance applications. So that's just a little bit about sort of the housing and the utilities, just a little snippet of that. Of course, too, if someone's looking to move or if they need a new apartment or a new housing situation, I will call around to our. You know, properties within the Middleborough area and see what the waitlist looks like and, you know, affordability and things like that. So again, just trying to keep pulse on what's going on in the community. Keep back one more, Sean, sorry. So childcare and employment, it's just that. The, you know, remote days, helping people connect with appropriate childcare for their kiddos this year has been interesting. Helping people connect with employment if they have barriers to employment, I might refer to Mass Rehab Commission. And again, if people need help with these things, they can reach out to me. Emotional behavioral health, I'll definitely talk about interface in a few minutes and how I found out about interface. And then, of course, healthcare and health insurance, crucial if someone doesn't have health insurance. We do consider that an emergency, so please reach out and let us know if we can help connect you with someone. So numbers really quickly, last year, we ended the year at one hundred and thirty one families and today we're at two hundred and seven. So it's April. I imagine that number is going to grow. So year over year, our numbers are increasing. Next slide. Thank you. So how does someone receive, you know, how does someone become referred to the Family Resource Center? I have people walk into the Henry B. Berkland School. I'm here during the school days. Feel free to walk in. Ring the bell, come on in or give me a call and say that you'd like to meet in person. I have no problem with that. I'll also come, you know, meet with the the community if you don't feel comfortable coming into the school. Feel free to give me a call. My phone number, you know, is going to be at the end of these slides, but you can call the Berkland School. And ask to talk to Megan, the Family Resource Center. I attend the child study team meetings, the CST meetings, so that if there is a student that's being brought forth. And something comes up with respect to the items that, you know, the the areas that I just mentioned. They can bring me into that conversation and see how I can, you know, engage and support that family further. Of course, faculty and staff every day referring families to the Family Resource Center as they connect with families in need. And then, of course, outside referrals. So like I said, liaison to the experts. So if I am working with a intensive care coordinator at CCBC. They might think of the Family Resource Center if they're working with a family that lives in Middleborough that might need house help with housing. So that's an example of how an outside referral can come in from a local provider. Next slide. So McLean funded, has funded many social emotional learning focused programming. So I just wanted to go over the things that we've been working on since. Before January of two thousand and twenty. So we had Screenagers, we showed that in February of two thousand and twenty. And then during the the when we shut down for COVID, due to COVID, I reached out to them because. Because we showed it in February, our numbers, they weren't great, to be blunt. And so I wanted to see if maybe people would like to view it from their home. So they did offer it virtually. So, you know, post shutdown, we did offer it virtually and I shared that as best I could in a short period of time through, you know, social media. We had a five week parent workshop called Understanding and Managing Your Child's Behavior. Scheduled for the spring, but unfortunately we needed to cancel it. We are. Kelly and I are talking and I would love to reschedule that. So that's definitely a conversation that we're having. We would like to continue having that conversation, make sure that we offer that. And that's for our earliest learners. That's for our pre K through maybe first, second grade. And really, a wonderful opportunity for parents to come and talk about their kiddos behaviors and how can they, you know, parent. Their kiddos and it's very nice one to one personal time. Interfaces, we all have been talking about for many years now. We're in our fifth year of having interface. It was extended to April of two thousand and twenty two. Thank you, McLean. And of course, our most recent. HBB friend Prince, whose job is to put smiles on people's faces, arrived three weeks and two days ago. To HBB and he is a classroom assistance dog with Mrs. Doak. So that's some, you know, basically what McLean has been supporting us with over the last year. Again, it's ongoing. Their support is phenomenal. I can't, I'm beyond grateful because it's a continuous conversation and the focus is on supporting our kids. Emotional behavioral health. Next slide. So this is a slide, this is, excuse me, just a little bit more information about interface if you're. Uncertain about what it is. So we, again, we've had it for five years. In total, they have paid sixty three thousand five hundred dollars for us to have. Interface. So I just wanted to put that out there because it's amazing. So interface is a free mental health referral service. It's the fastest way to connect with matches. The easiest way to connect with matches. So hypothetically, you're a parent, you have a million things going on and you have a kiddo that needs therapeutic, you know, counseling services. And you can call a bunch of places or you can call this phone number. And you will call William James College Freedman Center for Children and Families. A counselor will answer the phone. They will collect information from you, including where you live. You just need to confirm that you're a Middleborough resident. This is not just for our kids. This is for all Middleborough residents. So you just need to confirm that you are a Middleborough resident. You'll talk about geography. Where would you like, you know, to see this provider? How old is your child? What specialty area are you looking at? You know, a child that has ADHD that wants, you know, that you'd like help with executive functioning? Or anxiety or whatever it might be, you have that conversation. And then they take that information back to their database of over nine thousand providers and they make matches. They give you a case number and they call the matched providers based on that information and they give them your case number. So it's completely confidential. So then you call the providers upon receiving the matches from McLean. And you make your first appointment. It's seamless. It's it's very, very nice, especially for people that just don't. They don't have the time and it's frustrating to call a bunch of places and find out they don't take your insurance. Or they're, you know, they don't, you know, serve kiddos under twelve or whatever it might be. So that's one of the reasons I love it. The final reason I love it is that they call to follow up. They call to make sure that you're happy. They don't close out your case until you say, yep, I'm connected and I'm happy. I'm happy with the service. So that's why I love McLean, I mean, interface and thank you, McLean. Next slide. So this is more information. Phone number is right there, eight 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 two four four six eight four three. It's not a hotline, it's a helpline. So don't call and in a case of emergency, always call nine one one. So you can call nine to five, Monday through Friday. And the website is there and the website is also linked to my website on the Middleborough Public Schools website. Next slide. And if you see these, this, these come directly from them. So I'll, a lot of people hand these out. So this is what it would look like if you were a parent and you received a card. Next slide. So the food program is something I I touched on a few moments ago. So the Family Resource Center, like I said, began the snack program back in two thousand and sixteen. And I had thirty five kiddos receiving snacks. At the end of last year, I had eighty four. This year I have, at this point, one hundred and eighty nine students receiving snacks. So post COVID shutdown, I shouldn't say post COVID because we're still in it. But upon shutdown, we did. Change the snack program and modified it to the weekend food program. So instead of giving out five snacks a week, which is what we do for the snack program, we gave out. I I want to say eight to anywhere from to twenty pounds of food every weekend on a Friday. To people that came to pick up breakfast and lunch. So that was wonderful. Next slide. And the reason that we're able to do this is because of, again, a community partner. South Shore Community Action Council is phenomenal supporter of the Family Resource Center, has been since two thousand and sixteen. Has helped me to, you know, go from talking about the backpack program, which is a weekend program. To a snack program to, you know, again, modifying it during this state of emergency where people needed food on the weekends. And throughout the week. So from March to August, they gave us eighteen donated eighteen thousand two hundred and sixteen sixteen pounds of food. This year alone, this school year alone, they've donated five thousand two hundred and seventy nine pounds of food for snacks. Next slide. So this, this is the first weekend. We had a hundred bags, backpacks that we packed. That people could pick up and I put school supplies in in all of them as well. Next slide. And this is just what it it looked like in the beginning when we would unload the food and bring it into the school. And I could not do that. I could not have this food program if it wasn't for my amazing volunteers. Glenda Spillane jumped into action with me last year in March and helped me to pack these bags every week. She was amazing. She is amazing. And of course, I couldn't have the snack program. Run so smoothly without someone to help me get the snacks to the kids. So Nancy Carrero does an amazing job delivering. All of the almost two hundred snack bags to our kiddos every week. And during the hybrid learning, it was interesting because we needed to deliver in two days, different days of the week. So it was awesome. Next slide. So again, just a, I'm a liaison to the experts. So I try my best to go to as many community based coalition meetings as I can and just. Keep that pulse on what's going on. So these are a number of the coalitions that I attend on a monthly basis. So the hub is part of the Plymouth County Outreach. And I just want to share a little bit more about that. So it's in partnership with the Police Assisted Addiction Recovery Initiative. Or PRI and Beth Israel Deaconess Lee Heat Health in Plymouth. They received a grant from South Shore Health to integrate a team approach to provide behavioral health services to residents of Plymouth County. So I sit on the hub. It's actually weekly on Tuesdays with the Middleborough, at the Middleborough Police Department. Now it's virtual. But in January, when they kicked off, that's where the meetings were located. So I look forward to returning there on Tuesdays. Carver Cares, Middleborough Matters, PYDC, wonderful Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. Trifecta of towns that do amazing work in that world. Community Services of Greater Brockton, Middleborough Area Assistance Coalition, Massachusetts Commission on Grandparents Raising Grandchildren. Bay State Community Services is where I go for our Systems of Care Meeting for our community. Because they are our community service agency for families in Middleborough. And then Community Counseling of Bristol County is another one that had another community service agency. That has systems of care meetings and those meetings are really important for services for children and families with a focus on mental health services. Next slide. So Middleborough Area Assistance Coalition, it was the first meeting I went to back in October of two thousand and fifteen. I tell the story every time. I'm grateful to Mr. Lynch for giving me that brochure every. Every time I think about MAC and I talk about two thousand and fifteen in my first meeting, that's how I was introduced to it. I walked into an open house and I thought I couldn't have been more lucky to walk in and have all of these wonderful providers, relief providers. The people that do the frontline work right in front of me. So this is a list of the people that I've connected with through MAC. And I could not do my job without. So, you know, just to to recognize the wonderful providers that do attend MAC meetings. If you're interested in learning more about MAC, you can always reach out to me and I'm happy to to share information with you about it. Again, I'm I'm grateful for them every day. I spoke with three of them today to help a family in an emergency situation. So again, it's a daily, daily connection. I'm super grateful. Next slide. So over the course of the last year, I I've been trying to do more social media and just sharing and posting updates and things. I started a newsletter, Family Resource Center Update, using Smore. You can connect with or you can read those through the Middleborough Family Resource Centers page. That's now a new website on the Middleborough Public Schools website. So it's not a blog spot anymore. It's through the community tab of the Middleborough Public Schools website. So when you go into my webpage, on the left hand side, it'll say FRC update. You can click on that and see and every couple of months, my goal is to seasonally share resources, information, updates. Celebrations, thank yous as much as I can. So that's where it's going to go and my goal is to continue with that. Next slide. So what's to come? I haven't spoken about our transition to kindergarten fun yet. So that's what's to come. It's the countdown to K fun. So at this time, I'm just working with, again, more community partners, self help out of the in Avon, Brockton, excuse me. It's the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement, Ms. Carol Carver, who we all love. Who provides amazing, amazing programming to our little ones. Ms. Amanda Meyer over at the Public Library and of course, Ms. Meg, Ms. Katie, Ms. Bertha over at Soul. I have, we've just been connecting now with COVID. It's very hard, you know, to say what we'll be able to do. I just, I was sad, of course, to say the least, that we couldn't celebrate our fifth annual kindergarten social. Last August, but we will make up for it and we will find something to do because the goal is to connect with our families. Together and and welcome them into the Memorial Early Childhood Center and into kindergarten. I have amazing literature to send out. I have, you know, a goodness to share. So and some fun takeaways. So that's what's, that's what's to come for our kindergarten families. Next slide. I think that's it. Yep. I think that's it.
Well, thanks, Megan. And would, if you have any questions from the school committee, questions or comments?
Megan, first of all, I know we all appreciate everything that you do. So thank you very much. I guess the question I have for you more than anything, one of the big concerns I have. Is the CDC ends their eviction pause in June. And I was wondering, like, you know, just, I'm sure we have middle bar families, you know, trying to wait out the year. But do you have an idea of how many families we have and in problems at that point? Or just a rough estimate? I know I'm not holding you to numbers, but you know what I'm saying.
Certainly, yeah. Unfortunately, I don't. I really can't speak to to that. I think that, I mean, what I can say is I hope people do reach out and I hope that they are talking. With someone about this that works out in the community that, you know, works with the the housing experts. So that they are aware of what's out there for them, because there are some programs right now to prevent homelessness. So there's the RAFT program and there's some other things that, you know, people can be applying for right now to pay for their. You know, the whatever rent that they that they have passed due, you know, there, there's things out there to help. So there's, you know, funds out there and and applications to be filled out. So if anyone, I I always beg people, please don't wait. Until you're in an emergency homeless situation and we're looking for shelter or we're connecting with the Department of Housing and. Community Development in Brockton, the homeless coordinator, I really would love to be able to connect a family with. You know, Housing Authority, with Housing Solutions, Neighbor Works. So and Father Bill's Main Spring, because they have that preventative piece. So I'm sorry, I don't have the number, but.
No, 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 no problem. I just wanted to, Meg, I saw you had your hand up and I know Rich, you had yours, but Meg, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Megan, I just wanted to say that this is phenomenal, especially the past year with everything that families have been. Facing and the work that you've done and just the families that you're serving, that you're outreach to. It's, it's just awesome. So really, thank you. Thank your team for all of us. You're, it's, you're doing a really great job.
Thank you.
Rich, you had a question?
Thank you very much, Megan. This this is always definitely, I think, the highlight of our year as well as hearing your presentation on the FRC. I had two questions. The first one was you you threw, you put some stats up there for number of families served. And if I got it right, it was one hundred and thirty one for the two thousand and nineteen to twenty. And two oh seven for the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty one school year. And I was just curious, is that a huge jump from the two thousand and seventeen to eighteen? Or is that just kind of the trajectory that you're on?
It was, it's huge.
Okay.
Yep. It's not, it was, it's gradually, you know, my numbers are gradually increasing, but this past year, it's huge. Yep.
Yep. So it sounds like it's just a testament to how hard this year has been for everyone.
I would say so, absolutely.
The second question I had for you, and I don't know if this information is available, but the the interface program. That you mentioned and that you've brought up in past years, do do we get any sort of? Data or trends or anything from that? And if, okay, it sounds like, it looks like we do. Do we know, like, what is the most common reason that people call interface?
So we do receive quarterly reports. So we see that it's being used and areas that we are. Seeing most usage is in the elementary, middle and high school. So our parents are calling because. middle and high school. So our parents are calling because many, most of the referrals or the sharing of Interface um, is by the school staff. Um, and uh, I would say, I need to, I would need to look back and I apologize, I don't have this in front of me right now. But I would say it's, the primary reason for calling is um, for um, counseling services. So you can call for different reasons. You can call for information. You can call for, you know, um, for mental health counseling referrals. So definitely the mental health referrals, the mental health counseling referrals. And it varies, but there's a lot of um, anxiety. There's a lot of ADHD. Um, I've definitely seen those pop up at the top.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Other questions for Megan? Megan, as always, thank you for everything that you do because we know, you know, it's, we say it over and over again, but I think it's important to note, which is if a kid goes to bed hungry or is hungry during the day, they're not going to learn. And that was the whole point in establishing the Family Resource Center was helping with those needs that we knew were causing students problems for being students. And if you don't know where you're going to live at night, or you don't know where your food's coming from, then you can't be a student. It's as simple as that.
Exactly.
So thank you.
For the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. And Mr. Chair, now we're moving on to a program called Tiered Focus Monitoring. Um, it's a state evaluation report. And we invite Ms. Carolyn Lyons in onto the stage. Hi Carolyn, how are you? Good evening.
Hi, everybody. Nice to see you all.
And she has a, a, a short presentation for you this evening uh, on tiered focus monitoring um, with some good news. So Carolyn, welcome and take it away.
Great, thank you. So I did share with you all in the Dropbox, uh, the final report. I thought it would be nice to share the actual documents the state sent us. Um, by way of review, um, I talked about it last time I was on. Um, tiered focus monitoring is ultimately the state's way of going through our process and conducting what I would call an audit of our compliance with various laws and regulations. That includes special education indicators and civil rights indicators, two separate bodies of law. Both apply to not just our students here in Middleborough, but um, everybody in our school community. So um, the self-assessment, as I mentioned last time, was submitted in October of 2020. Uh, we supplemented that record through January 2021. The state asked a lot of questions, looks for a lot of clarifications, and we, we were sure to provide that. They then conduct their onsite investigation, which still occurred in person um, during two days, February 23rd and February 24th of this year. On February 23rd, the investigator came in and conducted a file review of several files in the PPS office. Um, particularly special ed files. The investigator was looking um, specifically on discipline in process across all five buildings. On February 24th, the state conducted remote interviews with selected staff. So she spoke with um, me as the PPS director. And then also she spoke with me on issues of civil rights as part of my role in PPS is to um, oversee civil rights as well. She spoke with superintendent and these interviews went on um, the majority of the day. Um, and it included follow-up questions uh, after the 24th as well. We received the final report on April 1st. And I am really happy and proud to share with you that over two different areas, both special ed and civil rights, over 29 indicators, file reviews, onsite interview, or uh, interviews that were remote. Um, our DESC found our process to be completely compliant. There were no areas of citation. Uh, for the second review in a row, special ed had zero areas of concern. And for the first time, civil rights had zero areas of concern. So this is a huge moment of success. I, if you don't mind my saying so, um, in terms of not just our special ed staff, but you're looking at the, the product of a lot of work through administration, through our teachers, related service providers, paraprofessionals, everybody. Um, frankly, who works in the district. And um, it's exemplary of, of effort that um, is ongoing. So uh, I know this year's been tough. Uh, I know it's been tough for families. It's also been tough for school. Uh, everybody who works in the schools. And I really did want to take the opportunity to congratulate everybody on um, some very, you know, solid work. I, I get excited when the state comes in because I get to brag about what goes on here in Middleborough. Um, and it's very gratifying to see the state agree with me. So um, with that said, this report is publicly available and uh, Mr. Siciliano is going to be helping me publish that after tonight's presentation. Um, I certainly want to congratulate everybody as much as possible. Um, and also remind everybody that as well as we did, this performance was strong. I still see us having areas of continued work. Um, you know, feedback is great. Uh, positive feedback is even better, but uh, sometimes the question remains, okay, what's next? And there are areas where I see us moving um, in a new direction and, you know, furthering our progress in areas of cultural proficiency and equity. I see us looking at discipline and the analysis of discipline data as things to look at in the future. And continued engagement with families, students, stakeholders, and the community. So our next onsite will not occur until uh, the 23, 24 school year. But if anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer them and um, would invite that at this point.
So uh, Carolyn, I just want to say one thing. I have been over two districts, a chair for now um, 10 or 11 years. Um, in that course of that time, as you know, every special um, education report that gets sent from the state, there was a copy that always goes to the chair. Uh, there's a copy that goes to the school committee chair and then the copy that goes to the superintendent. In those 11 years, I have never seen a, a, any document without some need or some issue that would arise until I saw this. So this is the first time I have ever been sent a document that says you were doing everything the way you were supposed to. And I can't be prouder for all the people who work um, in those buildings and especially your staff because this is truly an exceptional report. Um, and again, um, this is not sort of fluff in the sense that this was, this was not a site visit because as you know, and I think the other people, people, they announce themselves to all staff when they're there. And they essentially stay around so that if any staff wishes to talk to them on the side, they can and have a right to. Um, because they can, you know, give whatever information they want to, and that's part of the reason they do those site visits. So I, I just want to say, I, I was so impressed with this report. I, I do want to thank you and your staff for the fantastic job because it is uh, really unbelievable. So thank you.
Absolutely. I can, I mean, I, I've been saying it since uh, frankly, I was hired for this position, that the talent in this district is um, in some respects, the best kept secret we have. But uh, everybody that works in this district works very hard. And there's a lot of knowledge and expertise and care that goes into what we do every day. Um, so I'm always happy to, to see that be recognized. Just to give you an idea, you know, they, they don't just talk to us as well. They did survey um, all of the special ed families here in the district. And, and they don't show me the survey or anybody here in the district the survey. And they do that very deliberately because they want an honest opinion. Oh, I forgot to mention that they also interview our CPAC, uh, our Special Education Parents Advisory Council. Um, and again, those are private interviews that the district's not part of. Um, and they ask several questions about, you know, how, how our district engages with the parent group, the family group, excuse me, and um, how they're involved in our process. So um, thank you for those kudos and I'll certainly be celebrating that uh, with everybody in Middleborough who cares to listen.
Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. And um, thank you very much, Carolyn. This is great news. Um, I, my, my day job, we also have site visits. Um, they're a little different, but they're incred, they're immense projects. And I'm guessing that with something as important and consequential as the work that you do, they're probably also uh, immense and, and draining. And I'm looking at the title of this document here that you had in our Dropbox and it has no findings in the um, in the title. And I just, it's incredible that there's, you know, nothing that, that, that they have found. And that, it's not incredible. It's actually very expected, I think, given everything we've seen from you and your team. Um, but I just wanted to ask you about the, the like scale. Is it, is it literally findings or no findings? Or, or is there some sort of scale in between?
Great question. Yes. So there is a graduated scale. So it's everything from fully implemented to partially implemented to not implemented. I think there are five different categories. There is actually a commendable cat, um, rating that's above implemented. Although I will confess to you, I have never seen a commendable rating. It has now become my new goal. So um, I'll keep you posted on that, but it does, it does give you scales. To give you any, to give you an, an idea, if you are implemented, that's the, that and commendable. Are the only categories that don't require um, further action or corrective action. I think there are three categories underneath. It's partial implemented, not implemented, and then there's something that's even lower that um, I don't remember what it's called, but it's, that's bad. So I'm happy to not know it.
Excellent. Yep. Thank you so much.
Meg, you had a question, so go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, Carolyn, I just wanted to say thank you. Um, and again, pass it on to my team. As someone, sorry, as someone who recently went through the evaluation process with their own kid, um, I just, I can't say enough how great the staff was. So to see this in this reflector, in this report is awesome. So thank you.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure.
Anybody else? Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Yes. Well done, as usual. Uh, next on my report is another guest from the school system. Uh, another somebody who's very important to the school system. Uh, Dr. Melanie Gates is going to provide a technology update for you on where exactly we are. You know, we've had some successes with deliveries. Um, and she is sort of carrying the torch and, and moving the district forward with technology. And she has a number of updates for you this evening. Welcome, Dr. Gates.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch and school committee members. Uh, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Young and Mr. Lewis on their election um, to the committee, uh, reelection for you, Mr. Young. And also congratulate Mr. Young and Mr. Oakley on their nominations back to their positions, chair and vice chair respectively. Um, while I'm in those congratulations and welcomes, I'd like to also welcome a new member of the IT team. And that is a new uh, technology technician. His name is Curtis Sevigny. Um, and he joined us uh, just a few weeks ago now and has jumped right into the fire um, with us and has done a great job in meshing with our team. Uh, we've had a lot going on and uh, since we last met. Um, recently, uh, some of the more important work that we've done uh, was involved with the reopening uh, across K through eight. Um, you know, that was a monumental feat and I, and I think everyone in the community understands the, the work that we had at hand uh, after seeing those pictures. And um, the pictures told just a small piece of the story. And seeing the after effects with those pictures just really helped bring it to life of all uh, the work that was done in, in leading up to the full reopening. And uh, as a community member and, and employee of our district, I was just so proud of the collaboration and, and work from, from everybody, from the IT team, of course, but also from everyone at the complex in particular, who uh, lots of sweat. Uh, lots of uh, you know, dirty hands getting involved in lifting furniture and I don't mean dirty with the COVID way, but uh, just lots of uh, work uh, had to go in to reopening our schools. And I think we've done just a tremendous job with it and I'm just uh, overjoyed with pride in, in how seriously we took the endeavor to support one another. Um, and with that, I just would like to share some highlights with the IT teams' work with the reopening. Um, as we were, you know, looking at how we could successfully reopen um, the schools and make sure that we maintained appropriate mitigation strategies, it became uh, evidently clear that we needed to, to um, acquire laptops, particularly at the complex uh, due to the needs with data and power and connectivity to the BrightLinks. We wanted to ensure that we were putting our faculty and staff in the most safe positions possible with the full return. And we took great care in, in the placement of their teaching positions. And that really resulted in us um, having to come up real quick with the, with the idea of getting the laptops and thankful for Superintendent Lynch's support as well as that of uh, Mrs. Hickey, our Director of Business and Finance, in supporting this need. Uh, we were able to get the laptops in quite quickly. Um, and the IT team pumped them out super fast. And we really would not have been able to make it happen in the time that we did without the tremendous support of our partner um, with this purchase, that being Aukers. Um, in particular, uh, Mrs. Nicole Kelly, who's a community member who also works um, for Aukers. And she personally delivered devices to us on two different occasions. And without her personal attention to this matter, it would have been really right down to the wire of us getting set up to welcome back um, all of our students, faculty and staff. So I, uh, just a deep sense of appreciation to that company, in particular, Mrs. Kelly. In addition to deploying those laptops, uh, we just actually this week finalized, finalized the deployment up through eighth grade. So all of our faculty now have a, a nice new laptop uh, that we hope will last us at least a good four years, um, if not more. Um, but in addition to deploying those laptops, we removed desktops from most of the um, one through five classrooms at the complex. Uh, the desktops that we had were uh, quite old. Uh, they were originally Windows 7, which I think came out in like 2009. Um, we did upgrade them to Windows 10 recently. But uh, we decided to take those desktops out for a variety of reasons. Obviously their age, some of them actually um, failed uh, with the start of the school year. Um, and they needed to be removed anyhow. But we also removed them to make sure that our teachers had adequate space uh, on their desks and in their teaching area with the reopening. So these laptops were just tremendously helpful. And it got us a little ahead on our timeline with some of our technology goals for the future, uh, which we had kind of a three-year goal to um, remove desktops and replace them with laptops. Uh, thinking that if we ever had this unfortunate circumstance again, where we were thrust into remote learning, we would be more properly prepared for that and ready to pivot on a dime. Um, as uh, going through here, we had a lot of work also with reworking cabling for the reopening. And I'd like to always uh, thank Sean. I know I thank him a lot, but uh, he does so much work for us across the district and he deserves the accolades. Um, but Sean and I went around uh, vacuuming out BrightLinks air filters and reworking the connections, uh, re, re-running HDMI cables. Um, you know, and I do appreciate uh, Mr. Oakley and others from the community who are offering their support. Um, you know, we were able to get it, get it done and uh, it was quite the feat. But with the support of the teams at each building, it just really helped us uh, get the work done well and within the appropriate time. There's a, still a lot more deployment with tech going on. Tomorrow, we are going to be deploying about 90 laptops to the high school faculty. Um, we initially were going to hold off on that deployment until uh, the summertime and just allow the staff to use their existing device. But with the technology going into the new school, we felt that uh, we really needed to get those laptops out. So we're going to begin that distribution tomorrow. We will be uh, giving them their new laptop, collecting back their current laptop, and those will be repurposed um, for needs across the district. Uh, we are real excited with the opening of this new high school. I'll try not to get a little emotional because today was just uh, you know, a, a, a moment in time in history in Middleborough that we should note. And that is uh, the last day that our students would be walking out of the current school. And as a graduate, you know, certainly a bit sad about that, but so excited for the future. Um, today I got to spend time with Sean in one of the classrooms and we were, you know, trying to work out some of the um, potential issues that might arise with technology. We brought in um, you know, one of the new teacher laptops. We were connecting it to not only the flat panel, but the document cameras, um, testing out all the audio and visi, uh, video um, connections in the space. And, you know, really working through a lot of uh, you know, issues that we're able to identify on the front end so that this facility is uh, adequately uh, prepared for welcoming our students, faculty and staff, uh, which we're super excited about. The tech team's been doing a tremendous job in getting all of the desktops and computer labs set up in the new facility. Um, you know, we're actually uh, knock on wood, a little ahead of progress with that. And uh, that's really a credit to the leadership that Mr. Michael Mills has demonstrated in organizing the team and focusing on the tasks at hand. Um, that's been supported also by um, myself, Sean and Mike meet every Wednesday morning uh, either at 8:00 or 8:30 to, you know, go through our to-do list. We're always, you know, checking things off, making sure we're keeping up with uh, all of the tasks associated with the new high school. Um, and we wanted to be ahead of time, ahead of schedule because we just don't know what issues might arise and we want to be able to resolve them. Um, you know, and hopefully have everything buttoned up before we're welcoming our faculty and staff. Um, we've got a big uh, technology cut over going on um, Um, we've got a big, uh, technology cut over going on, um, uh, tomorrow night at five o'clock, we are going to be converting our phone system over to the new facility. Um, so that's some exciting work, um, supported with our partner, LCN. Um, so we're thankful for, uh, for their, uh, continuous collaboration. Myself and Sean meet with LCN every Tuesday, um, to just go through the plan, make sure we got everybody's, uh, voicemail extensions prepared, phones identified, locations for phones, et cetera. So lots of work there and we're just so excited to see it come to fruition in that beautiful facility that, uh, our community has, has delivered for our students. So again, thank you, Middleborough, for making this happen. Lots more going on in technology. Uh, our access, online access testing, which is the testing that our English learners take, is, uh, we're closing out with that. And I'd like to thank Mr. Christian Cardoza and Mrs. Megan Caspar for their work in, in supporting that. We also are going to get back into getting, uh, geared up for MCAS. Uh, we had to kind of table that work so that we could focus on the reopening and now the opening of the high school. Uh, but we're going to get back to deploying those Chromebooks and getting everything ready to roll so that we can have a seamless, um, implementation of online MCAS. Uh, I hope you've seen our, our Tech Tip Tuesday newsletters that we've been sending out the last, uh, several months. Um, it was just a new initiative with, uh, what we call our digital learning and teaching team. A lot of times people think it should be a teaching and learning team, but I wanted to flip it to just emphasize that with, uh, you know, uh, digital resources or technology in general, that you're always learning, you're never just going to know it and, uh, you know, be set with what knowledge you have. You need to continuously grow and learn with it. And I'm so proud of the work of this team, particularly given the stress that we're all under, um, because of the current, uh, pandemic and just the added, um, anxiety that that can bring forth. But the team has done a tremendous job. We meet monthly, we talk about different ideas we have, about tips and workshops. Um, and I've just been thankful for all of their efforts. I'd like to just publicly thank Mrs. Tracy Lord, Ms. Christina Stoker, Ms. Kristi Goldman, Ms. Nicole Fantasia, Ms. Katie Moglofflin, Mr. Ed Finch, Mrs. Brittany Lesser, Ms. Megan Connor, Mrs. Vicky Miles, and of course Sean Cicliano, who's also serves on this team. And the last update that I have is, uh, just today, actually, Sean and I upgraded our StreamYard account to the highest version that was available, which will give us increased number of destinations to which we can stream, increases the quality of, uh, video. I believe it, it goes to a full HD 1080p, uh, for streaming and recording. It will also allow us to increase the number of hours for recording, in case these meetings get extra long, uh, or any of our other opportunities that we host through Stream, StreamYard. And it'll also allow us to have more participants backstage. So we're thankful for the school committee's support in continuing to pursue this application, not just for school committee meetings, but I think it's going to have a tremendous benefit for family engagement, which I know is, uh, such a huge priority for us all, in particular, school committee. You guys have been championing it for, for quite some time. And, uh, we're glad to support your efforts as well. That's what I have for a, a brief technology update. I'm sure I probably missed some things. It's been a long few weeks, uh, getting geared up for our, uh, our new home, uh, for the Satrums. Uh, but, uh, we're excited and ready to keep up the energy to, uh, welcome everybody in, formally on, uh, the 26th for staff and the 27th for kids. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Melanie. Anybody have any questions for Melanie? Other than I'm very much looking forward to, uh, wandering around on the 27th and seeing how everything's progressed. It should be fantastic.
Absolutely.
So thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Next on my report is an MCAS testing update. And I would like to bring you up to speed. I know that there's been a lot of conversation statewide on MCAS, whether we're going to have MCAS, whether they're not going to have MCAS. Uh, and right now, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, otherwise known as DEES, um, is moving forward with a plan to administer the MCAS test in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is they're required to, they are required to by federal statute. Um, and I begin by saying that the department maintains that, that MCAS continues to be a crucial diagnostic tool to promote student success and education equity, while recognizing this year the need for adjustments and flexibility in their testing schedule. Uh, they feel strongly that the MCAS test will provide Massachusetts educators and families critical insight into academic issues and losses that must be addressed, as well as data on which students and districts have been most impacted by the disruption of schooling. Uh, administering the MCAS, they feel will make it possible to reliably assess student progress in relation to curriculum standards. Um, under federal law, states are required to test students annually in math and English in grades three through eight and in one grade level in high school. And in Massachusetts, that's the 10th grade. Additionally, testing in science is required once in elementary, middle and high school. So far, the, the MCAS testing schedule has been modified to accommodate, uh, the closure and extend the dates closer to the end of the year for more learning time prior to the testing. Uh, changes that have been approved so far by the Board of Education in the state include, um, postponing the testing until later in the spring, uh, shortening the MCAS testing in grades three through eight and administering, administering only a portion of each MCAS test assessment in each subject, uh, by modifying the competency determination for the class of 2021 by allowing students to receive, uh, their competency determination or CD by passing an approved course and demonstrating competency in that subject. So for our last year's 10th graders, um, the recommendation to the board will be, they will not, they will not have to take the test to pass and graduate from high school. Uh, ongoing providing accountability relief for school districts. The commissioner will not name any new underperforming or chronically underperforming districts or schools in the Commonwealth during the upcoming year. And the department has also extended the testing window for access testing for English language proficiency for in our English learners, uh, from February, traditional February until the end of May. So that's the current plan. What they also propose to do, and the commissioner is recommending to the board for April 20th, their April 20th meeting, which is their next meeting, um, is that, uh, they modify the graduation requirements for the class of 2022. And if this is approved, if his recommendations approved, this year's 11th graders will not be required to take the MCAS test. Uh, in addition, the timeline for administering the test in grades three through eight and 10 will be extended until June 11th, um, which is beyond what was originally, uh, extended. Uh, with the board's approval, the commissioner's recommendations will modify the competency determination or CD requirement in English Language Arts and Math for students in the class of 2022, uh, in recognition of the missed testing opportunities when schools were closed last spring. Uh, and as a result, the upcoming administration of the MCAS scheduled to open on May 3rd and will be open through June 11th will no longer be required for current 11th graders. However, current juniors and seniors may still take the test this spring to qualify for the Adams scholarships and the Copl, Coppl certificate of mastery. Uh, and juniors who do not participate this spring will be able to test for scholarships during the, uh, retest period in the fall of 2021. And finally, in addition, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed will offer remote administration of the ELA math and science assessment this spring in grades three through eight. So for those folks and families who are home and have chosen to go remote and stay in the online learning academy, there'll be an opportunity for their children to take the MCAS from home. Uh, those plans have not been distributed yet by DEES, uh, but that is their current plan. And as of yesterday, in a phone conversation with the commissioner, uh, not just me, it was all the superintendents in the, in the state, uh, but he's going to announce the details of that soon. So right now, grades three through eight, again, a little quick summary, we'll have shortened tests. Um, we'll have a test window that brings us to June 11th, near the end of the year, close to the end of the year. Um, and in grades 10, uh, they're going to recommend to the board for April 20th, uh, that the current 11th graders be excused, uh, and not have that as a graduation requirement, but still be able to take it for the scholarships that are available, uh, for state institutions in Massachusetts. That's basically the summary where we are. After the April 20th meeting, we'll have more information as to what the board does or does not approve, because the commissioner can recommend, uh, but the board does approve, uh, much like this board here operates, uh, with regard to action items. So, uh, that is the summary of where we are with MCAS right now. Uh, we're ready with technology, as you heard from Dr. Gates. And we are, uh, basically, uh, ready to move on and administer these tests. Again, there's been a lot of discussion at the state level, a lot of requests on part of superintendent associations and teachers association saying, let's give it a break this year. Uh, but again, uh, uh, an urgency from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed and the federal government saying that we need to test students to find out exactly where they are. Uh, and if we could somehow measure the quote unquote, "learning loss", which, uh, is, seems to be the topic with most of these boards. So that's where we are with MCAS. I'll answer any questions that I can with regard to the timeline. Uh, again, some of these things are still a little bit difficult right now in terms of what the board is going to decide to do on April 20th.
Brian, I, I just want to be clear on the, if a student takes MCAS, if an 11th grade student, for example, takes MCAS because they want to attempt to get the Adams Scholarship, what would happen or if they failed the MCAS?
Mr. Chair, I believe it's a hold harmless. Uh, I, I believe that will be part of the recommendation that, that a student can try. And if they fail, then that, that's okay. But they will be held harmless in terms of trying endeavoring to pass the test. Um, and I believe that is part of the recommendation. I would hope that would be part of the recommendation because I don't want that to be something that somebody's going to have to take a chance on getting a scholarship. It's something that, uh, should basically be something that's given.
Well, and especially if, you know, again, if that's the case and people are held harmless, then we really should encourage all our students to take the test, especially if they're going to state schools, because it offers them an opportunity to get, um, reimbursement for attending those state schools.
Yes.
Okay.
Tu- tuition, I believe, but not fees. And then
Right, and
what used to be tuitions were up here and fees were down here, now it's the opposite. So all these kids that get these scholarships don't have the fees, but they, they still have the rest of it.
I think it runs about a thousand bucks a year.
Yeah, I believe it's about, just about a thousand bucks, 985, I believe, the last couple of years, something around there, yes.
And then the other question I have is around students taking MCAS at home. Do students who are attending school have the option to take the MCAS at home? Uh, for, for, for the students who would be in school normally, not in the, completely away to, away, uh, you know, remote? Do they have that option to take it at home?
I, I don't have a specific answer for that. I, I think the idea is that students who are in school would take it in school. Uh, and if a student needed accommodations, they'd be provided for that student in school, whether it be small group or some type of assistance, uh, they, with, teachers can't help them take the test, but they can certainly provide guidance in terms of direction where the test is. And I know we have some, some teachers on the committee who are familiar with administration of MCAS. But I would think, I would hope that we're going to get as many students tested in school as possible. Um, the idea of these kids taking the MCAS, the secure test, um, at home on a, on a computer, that is, to me, is, is, goes against everything that, as a principal, for a long time principal, the, the sort of signing off with, with, with blood sometimes on these, these mod that we have to fill out in a test to the fact that there was absolutely no chicanery and, and nothing going on and nobody looking over shoulder and teachers weren't helping. And, and we can't make copies of the exam at all. There's no such thing. And to send these kids home and to do it at home, you know, there's screenshots and there's everything else that's going on. I just, I, I, it goes against everything that has been MCAS for so many years. But I think the idea from the state is to get as many students tested as possible and, and use the honor system. Uh, this year, for those kids who are on the, who have chosen to be on the online learning academy, that's what we call it basically, or to be in that cohort for that remote cohort.
Thank you, Brian. Other questions? See no one. I, I just want to say, Brian, they've done everything possible to mess this up as best as they could. Um, you know, with, without a doubt, they have done everything they could to make this as difficult as possible for kids and as difficult as possible for administrators. And unfortunately, it's because, uh, they want these tests done, and I get it. Except, uh, this is unbelievable. You know, we have spent the better, as you've just outlined, we've spent the better part of our, of being a part of this, learning that these, these tests were, were so rigid, they needed to be in person. And, and now they've just decided, no, you know what? We're going to do whatever we need to do to get it done. And in my mind, they don't really care. And, and they, they just want to have stats. And, and that's the unfortunate thing. Given what every, what everybody has gone through, um, I would also add that the push to get kids back to school has really been a push about MCAS. And that's it. With all due respect to everything else, all the state wanted was those kids in school in the time they needed MCAS. Um, and that's disheartening to me. And this only proves it even more so. I don't know. I was just going to leave that out there because I don't expect you to answer that. And I don't, I don't make it as a question to you, Brian. I just make it as a statement for being here for a while.
I would share this with you and, and we've had this discussion, that there is a whole division of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which is about accountability, which is about testing. Uh, and there are people that, whose jobs are based on this, and it's a large department of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They're answerable to the federal government. And the bean counters at the federal government become the bean counters at the state. And unfortunately, that's, that's the position we're in. Uh, and the current Secretary of Education has indicated that he would not be granting any type of a waiver, uh, for states. And he's a former elementary principal in Connecticut, uh, and moved on to a state level position in Connecticut. And that's in recognition, um, he was a national distinguished principal from Connecticut. And I, I know that because I was one in Massachusetts and he's on that scroll. And I know that he had that award. So I think it's a, it's a, it's something that he has to remember his roots. And I'm thinking maybe, that maybe he has a whole department at the federal level, uh, who depend on their jobs, accountability jobs. So I, I don't know exactly what's driving it, but, but, uh, I do know that they are, they feel strongly that they really would like to get some type of state level measure of, of where the students in the Commonwealth are compared to past years.
And, and, and I get that. And I, I get that. But we all know, the only measure that matters is the 10th grade test. Because that's the one that determines whether or not you graduate from high school. And what they're saying is, the one test they don't care about is the one test that means everything. So they can't say we need these measures to understand them when they're throwing out the one test that means anything. It both means something for kids from a, a, a graduation point, and it means something to kids from a fiscal point, because that's where they get the Adams Scholarship. And oh, by the way, the other thing the state does with the other hand is throw out, oh, by the way, if you want to take the test, go ahead and you can, you can get Adams Scholarship money, knowing full well that there are lots and lots of students who won't do it. And so they don't have to pay out Adams Scholars for the next couple of years at the level they've had to in the past, because those kids aren't going to take the test. And that's a sad reality. And so in addition to everything they've done this year, they're taking away money for kids to go to college in Massachusetts. And that should anger everybody more than anything else. What they should really do is they should take the number of students that on average, every high school in Massachusetts has had as Adams Scholars and just allow, whatever that number is, for the schools to say, you've averaged 100 kids who've been Adams Scholars, so your top 100 students are Adams Scholars. And that way they keep the levels the same. But they don't care about that. And that's the, that's the piece that angers me more than anything else. Is they maintain that this is important because they need a baseline. But the one baseline they have that makes, that is, is the critical element, they've waved that off. So they can't say to me that this is all about making sure we have a baseline, because it's not.
So moved. Here, here.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
I know. So I apologize for my anger, but my anger is directed to the state more than anything. And I know you're the messenger here, Brian. And so this has nothing to do with you, as you and I have had many of these conversations in your office. Um, so, um, you know, I, I just want to lay it out and it, it's sad. And I can't emphasize how sad it is. And the one thing I do want to try to make sure of is the students in Middleborough don't get ripped off. And don't let And don't let them rip you off by taking your Adam scholarship away. Take the test, qualify for the Adam scholarship, and take their money.
Okay.
All right.
If there's no other comments on MCAS testing this evening, I will, I will move on. Uh next up is is a calendar. It's just a draft at this point for next year. I know we sort of just sort of finalized this year's calendar and again. Apologizing to all those parents out there, but a reminder that high schoolers do have tomorrow off and the and the Monday after vacation and K through eight and pre K through eight do not. Um they are, we are in school tomorrow for pre K through eight and the Monday after vacation. So. Uh this year's calendars, the two, obviously for next year, the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two draft calendar is there before you. Uh Mister Chair, I don't know if you want to talk about initial discussions about thoughts. Uh under normal circumstances, we would probably uh begin our orientation for faculty. Uh that final week of August, August thirty, thirty-first, and perhaps uh September one. Perhaps invite students back for the second and third of September. Um giving them the three day weekend for Labor Day weekend and and then move on from there throughout the year. Decisions we have that have to be made include uh Good Friday, which we took off the calendar last year, knowing full well that we were in a tight year. Uh looking at a real tight year uh with regard to the timeline of building of a new high school and moving into the new high school. So there are a number of discussions that you need to have as a committee. This is something that is you really your decision. You determine this as a group. Uh so you certainly can begin discussion about this this evening and and I'll step back and or we can just sort of. Introduce some thoughts and and uh I would go with you, Mister Chair, and what what you want to do here.
Um Brian, the only question I have for you, because I know it's been a question in other districts. Right after Labor Day, um some districts have not started right after are not starting right after Labor Day next year. Because it's um it's Jewish holidays to begin with, and they were concerned that they would have, they would be missing staff. Um and that would be a a concern to them um in some in some of the districts. So I'm just, I just throw that out there. I'm not sure if everyone knew that or if everyone um just making sure that that um. That will obviously potential might be a potential for some families not coming back to school right at at that point. So I want to raise that to people. Um I I don't have, the the I guess the thing I would like to say is. I mean, the hope is this is a normal year, right? I mean, that's that's our dream. Um I would like to, as best we can, we be use the um professional development days around holidays. That seems to have worked out for families for the most part, and I think families appreciate appreciate the sort of the little extension at times. Um I haven't heard otherwise, but um we will not, obviously will not be voting tonight. This is more to put, I would like to put this out so that families can take a look at it and see. Um so I know in the past, Brian, you've given us sort of options, uh put some things out and um give um. Give um. Let people know what we're thinking.
Yeah.
Um. And and that kind of thing. So Rich, I saw your hand up, so go right ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Mister Chair. Um uh uh I I was just curious, uh what is the total number of PD days uh every year that's that we're obligated to provide?
We have four full PD days.
Okay.
And we have early release days. The early release days were taken off the schedule this year because we had the ten full PD days at the beginning of the year. Which shortened the school year for students to one hundred and seventy days.
Got it. Thank you very much.
So if that's how you want to leave it tonight and we'll go back and what I can do is I I will list out, uh I'll have a listing of all the holidays. Religious and otherwise throughout the year and drop that in the box for next time. Um so that we can look at that and and consider those. There are number one, a number of holidays that are listed on here. But certainly we could probably list some more. Um and that is something we certainly need to be sensitive to. There's no doubt about it.
Uh Greg, I saw your hand up, so go right ahead.
So I just took a quick look at it. Um I know we talked in years past about the concern with that half day. For a holiday weekend, you know, those sort of things being concerned for attendance. Has that data shown that that's not a problem?
It it has not been a problem.
Okay. And my second question is, um I mean, I also, I I think as a parent, I always liked the start after Labor Day. Is that what we're thinking this year? Or is that what?
That could be a possibility. That would be something you would determine.
I think Rich was, Rich, was that something you're saying would be a potential problem to start after Labor Day?
Um no, I believe that um hold on one second, and I'll I'll let you know definitely.
I'm just, I mean, I'm in favor of the after Labor Day start. I mean, I know the teachers have to be back before Labor Day, but I just think for families, if you're wrapping up a summer vacation or something, it's like sometimes like. Oh, we have to be back in school for that one day or two days before the holiday. It doesn't make any sense to me that to have kids come back for just a day or two. So I guess I'm I'm in favor of that after Labor Day start, as long as it doesn't cause a. And I think Christmas break is not a particularly long one this year, if I read the schedule right.
So uh Greg.
Previous years, we've had. We've had long Christmas breaks.
Uh so the one I was pointing out was Rosh Hashanah starts Monday, September sixth and ends Wednesday, September eighth.
Okay, okay.
So that's why I was bringing it up in regards to that particular piece.
Alright. Well, my, I mean, I'd like to see at least one option where we start after Labor Day. If you want to do another option that starts before Labor Day, that's fine with me. But I'd like to see, I like to see, I personally would like to see one option um for start after Labor Day and um. See what that does to the end of the school, see how close to the end of June that pushes us.
Good.
Thank you.
And just so everybody out there knows, um the time around um. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving is off because it is contractual. So that will not change. We will, we we have in our contract to have the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off. So that is going to continue. We won't have a half day. I know other districts do a variety of different things, but I just want to point out that that's the reason we do that. Meg, did you have your hand up, by the way?
I did, yeah. Can we um I know, I think we did it for this year, but honestly, we had so many versions of the calendar, I can't remember. Um but I think we put a half day in March at some point. Or there was definitely a discussion about it for one of the PD days. Can we look at doing something like that again, just to break up March?
Sure.
Sure, we can definitely do that. We we that that's what we had talked about originally when we started the discussion for um. The calendar oh so long ago when we were trying to figure out when the high school would open. Um we'd never to think it would change a hundred and eleven times over the course of this year as it has. So that sounds good. So um so Brian, if we could get multiple options, if we could put it out there for parents to take a look at and.
Sure.
Write some feedback on, I think that would be fantastic. And um we'll do it in all the forms we have, and we would ask. Uh I I think the biggest thing to ask the people who are listening and watching this, um that when you see it, if you could share it with your friends. Um and let them know it's out there. So normally this is done in December um of the previous year. Because we've had a change to calendars so many times for this year, I didn't want people to think that it was another change. We wanted to give it a little break. It's later than we have in the past. I I I would say this, I don't think there's any. Anyone here who's talking about changing February vacation or April vacation. They are in the traditional February and April vacations. So I know. Families want to plan for those things, um especially coming out, hopefully coming out of COVID and getting some semblance of uh. Back to normal. So those will stay in their normal places. Um and we'll go from there. So that'd be great, Brian. If you could do that, I think that'd be fantastic.
Sure. We'll do that, Mister Chair. Put maybe three drafts together, different scenarios.
Sounds great.
Neither of them being the absolute best option, but just for discussion. I got it. In my final uh notation tonight is the school choice update. I do not have current numbers on Bristol Plymouth yet. We do not have those solid numbers in yet, unfortunately, or from Bristol Aggie or from Norfolk Aggie. And we continue to register uh kindergarten students. So uh. This may, this decision on school choice may have to wait till I get more solid numbers and it may be mid-May, keeping in mind that we do not. We've announced that we're going to be a school choice district, but we don't make, don't have to make the determination exactly uh until later. So once we make that determination about how many available, how many grade grades and might be open, where we could fit students if we can. And keeping in mind that we're really, really vigilant with regard to a high school that was. Only we're only allowed to build for so many students and and we don't want to invite too many students in um under school choice if we're if enrollment is going to be an issue. So there'll be more updates for next meeting uh and we'll have, should have much more definite numbers from students that are have committed to BP. And have committed to Aggie North, uh Norfolk Aggie and Bristol Aggie. Um and we'll have better numbers on kindergarten. We have done some kindergarten registration recently. We have our numbers. They're growing, uh and we usually have the sort of X plus um whatever number, but we're not sure the number again of folks that may. Decide that they want to try to retain their students in kindergarten. Um I I normally would not recommend that, but if that's the case for some parents, we will definitely consider it. Uh as an option this year. Um but that that school choice will will have better numbers for the next meeting. And that concludes my report this evening.
Um before you le- leave your report, Brian, I just want to um mention one thing and um. Melissa Tulane uh is the lady who asked us about opening the high school for the month. Um uh she also put a a comment in, which I think is important to read. She said, thank you for answering my question. I understand the state mandates. It's just extremely hard for families with working parents to change or reduce their working hours for one month. Just so we can get them all into a new building for a month. Most jobs are not that flexible with their employers changing their schedules within weeks' notice. So I I wanted to make sure we. We read that piece because I thought it was important.
The idea would be for those students to get back into school and maybe free up the working parent. Uh some more. So I mean, that that was part of that too. So we thank you for our input. There's no doubt about it. So. Um but again, and 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 she puts in her first sentence, we thank you for uh the understand, she understands the state mandates. If we're mandated to, then we have to do it. So. So.
Any questions for the superintendent before his report ends? Seeing no one. Thank you, Brian. I appreciate it. Um with that, I just want to bring up uh the high school building project. We had our meeting yesterday. The high school is at ninety-four percent. The high school will open on time uh the Tuesday after vacation. Um there will still be some pieces outstanding, uh just so everyone knows, they're not. Clearly not anything safety wise or anything that would uh be problematic to running a school. Um but um those pieces, the additional pieces will be um worked on. If we allow it at nighttime or on weekends. Um so they would not be worked on in the school day with the probable exception of like, for example, some of the outside work. Maybe worked on during the school day, um nothing that would disrupt classes or anything like that, but more uh pieces about landscaping and and pieces like that. Um so everything is uh set to go. Um I will keep you guys informed, but um. Brian, did you want to add anything about the um building committee meeting?
I I do, Mister Chair. We discussed last night, and I know there are a lot of folks out there that want to somehow say goodbye to the current high school. Um you heard the emotion in in Dr. Gates' voice. Uh you've been hearing mine down the road. Uh but it's a school that means a lot to a lot of people. Uh there were fifty classes that graduated from that high school. Uh enjoyed that high school, had great experiences in that high school. Um and now basically it's being taken offline and will be demolished and turned into a parking lot. So that's the reality of building a new school and and moving on for the future. However. Uh we want to recognize that folks have had a relationship with that high school. Uh and we're going to try to provide opportunities in early May. Uh Mister Brandigan has agreed to give up a Saturday and go in there. Um and we also going to try to do for a one or two uh evenings and turn the lights on and and invite folks to stroll the hallways. Um leave it as it is, but stroll the hallways and take a walk through and do a little reminiscing. Uh perhaps for another, for an additional hour. I know that when we did, we did the Bean signing, uh it was a very popular event. And there were a lot of people that came in from that I recognized from going to high school with them that wanted sort of to sign for the future. But also wanted to really take a look around in the current high school, and and I think this will, we'll try to provide that opportunity for these folks. So. That is part of of what we're going to try to do, uh what what we're going to do. It'll just be the announcement of dates. Down the road where we'll we'll be able to do this. It'll be sort of a a lights out ceremony, if you will. Um. So I just wanted to mention that, that that we did mention at the meeting yesterday, but that is something that we plan on doing. I know there are a lot of people out there who would like to do that.
Uh Greg, I saw your hand up. Go right ahead.
Yeah, Brian, any idea when those dates are going to be announced? Because I did get that question from a few teachers who. I work with now that had worked in the high school and they mentioned to me like, oh, I'd like to go say, you know, see my old room and.
I would, I would tell you, Mister Stevens, that we have to turn the building over to Fontaine Brothers on May tenth, so it'll be before May tenth. So it probably be will will be the week of of uh May fifth through May ninth or or thereabouts that that week or through through that sort of. That week or just about that week. It'll be announced. We'll make sure it's published on the website. We'll try to get word out as much as we can through social media. Uh we've gotten a lot better at that recently with with the addition of Sean Siciliano in the district. Uh making sure we get word out uh to as many people. I don't want people to say, oh, I didn't know about it, but uh we'll try to get it out there. We'll try to get it out there and. In in an article that we're putting in the Gazette in the near future about the progress of the high school. So we'll try to get word out, but we don't have the exact date yet. Uh but they'll be nailed down within a week or so.
Meg, you had your question. Go right ahead.
Uh thank you, Mister Chair. Is there a plan for the reverse? And I know I've asked that before, but I just wanted, I wanted to kind of reiterate for people to come into the new high school and see the new high school.
That will be in the summer. Uh we'll be doing something in in the late June or or July for for opportunities for folks in the community to come in. And take a stroll through the new high school and give them an opportunity. The whole idea with try to. Mitigation strategies, trying to keep as many visitors out of the school as possible at this point. We've done it safely at the high school for this year. Um but once the kids are out of there, there won't be a reason for that any longer. Would ask people to obviously use social distancing when walking through the high school and. Uh but we won't have students going in there the next day who might contract if there's a somebody that leaves a a germ somewhere. But. So we're uh it'll be probably early June, late June or early uh July for folks in the community to get in there. So it will still be a construction site. There will still be some last punch list work that's going on uh with things that still need to be finished up. Uh of an acoustic panel or two that needs to be resized, and we heard about some of those issues yesterday at the meeting. Um but that's that is our hope, Mister Ness.
Awesome. Thank you.
Other questions? Um just one thing because it comes up, I get it more probably more frequently than any other one, so I'll say it out there for everybody. Um the track is not open to the public because again, it is a construction site. Um and it will continue to be a construction site while the um old high school is coming down and the parking lots are being fixed, so it will be a while. And um I know a lot of people have asked about it. Um where we still have to have a conversation about times. It'll be open to the public and everything like that. Um so we will have that as we get closer to being able to open things up to everyone. Other questions? Okay, then we will move on.
Uh Mister Chair, I did see a question on the on the chat from from a a concerned individual. Um it just went off my screen.
Go ahead. Was that about the students tour?
Oh, yeah, students getting a tour. We we have had a number of students through, but we can't do it wholesale because it's still a construction site. Uh but I know that Mister Brandigan has plans for students with maps and giving them time uh to get to know the school. As part of their first week of orientation in the new school. So I know that that is his plan. It is a three-story complex. It is a simple layout. Once people get to know it. Um students are remarkably resilient, and I think that they will figure it out. Uh there's an area where there's the gym, uh gymnasium, and then the performing arts uh with a band and drama are. Sort of similar to the setup we have now in the high school. Uh and then there's an academic wing, three stories high, similar to what we have in the current high school. Uh it's just organized differently around a a different area and uh it's just. So I think it'll be, the students will become accustomed to the building uh very quickly. So uh thank you.
Great. Anything else before we move on? Uh, Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Mr. Chair, it's probably the last time I'm gonna get to ask it, but, um, I guess the streak is on, so I gotta continue it. Are we, we still, uh, under budget?
We are still considerably under budget, um, and will continue to be because. Um, if you think about it, we are, we are paying for additional COVID issues. Um, and Plymouth County will be reimbursing us for that. So not only are we be under budget. With the COVID money, um, but we are under budget considerably when we get COVID money back. That is directly going to the project. It does not go to the general fund. It does, it does not go anyplace else but back into the project to, again, make sure. You know, the one thing we talked about from the very beginning and. There is no one who's been on that committee longer than me because it was myself, Kathy Pietali and Mike Malone who met with MSBA for the first time. Um, we have made sure that we created a twenty-first century educational facility for kids. And did it, um, within the, the fiscal means that we were asked to do and come under that number. Uh, considerably. So I think that's important.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Um, the next item on our agenda is just a reminder to the school committee members that April twenty-sixth is town meeting at Nichols Junior High School. Um, so I want to remind you about that. The, um, town meeting warrant is issued on the town website. There is a special before the regular meeting as usual. Um, so you're all invited to attend. Um, I wanted to mention because it just came out that the Mass Association of School Committees and the Mass Association of School Superintendents. Uh, will have a conference this year, a convention. Um, as of right now, they are planning to do it in person. Um, so I just saw that, um, so I wanted to make everyone aware of that. Um, did everyone get their books? You guys, usually, I know I got mine, so sometimes you get your books beforehand. Um, it's sort of a, okay, I'll make sure. I know Zeke, you probably wouldn't get your book because you knew. Um, I just wanted to see if the other people did. Okay.
Come today. I think I got a packet. I didn't open it yet.
Okay. So what usually happens is the packet outlining, uh, sort of the process to get, um. Articles on for consideration for the assembly and everything like that. But one of the things in there is, there's a variety of, of people that you can. You can nominate for a variety of different things. And so, um, I just wanted to. Ask you to look at that, uh, because I think at the next meeting, um, I'll be presenting somebody that we should, we should actually move to that committee. And ask for, um, a vote on that. So I wanted you to see that and I'll explain that at the next committee. So just take a look at that because it's an interesting piece. Um, Dan Hill is tomorrow. The superintendent and I are signed up. That will be virtual. Um, that's the usual Mass Association of School Committees meeting with legislators. Um, so I know I'm part of that. Did anyone else sign up for that? You did, Mr. Oakley. Congratulations. Or do you have a question?
No, I I'm gonna try to, try to join you guys. I can't be there at the very beginning, but, um, it sounds like it's something you can drop in. Uh, later since it's all virtual, right?
Right. So you can drop in throughout the day. So we're, we're perfect. And I'm pretty sure they're gonna. Record some of those, especially the sessions with different people. So that'll be that. Um, then the chair has, uh, she will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is meeting minutes.
So moved?
Do I hear a second?
Second?
Uh, discussion. And Zeke, for your first consent agenda, this is, um, just sort of. Everything that's sort of not controversial or has, it's just minutes and, uh, usually it's, uh. The things that people are asking, requesting of us for fundraisers. Um, throughout the year that are normal processes, though. The normal, the, really the normalist thing that we move out of there is, um. In normal times, students take field trips and if they go out of state, we have to, we have to approve that. So we. We do that separate for out of state, but a regular field trip, for example, to Blue Hills or to Soul Homestead would just go through the consent agenda. So Rich, did you have your hand up?
Go right. Yeah, um, just during the discussion piece, um, I, it sounds great. The fundraiser that's in there sounds great, but I, I was just curious if anyone, um, here knows. Cause I didn't know what an envelope fundraiser is and I just wondered if, um, if anyone knows what that means.
Hold on one second.
Uh, the, the purpose of the fundraiser sounds great. Don't get me wrong. I just, I hadn't heard of that and I was just curious what it was.
Oh, so the envelope fundraiser, Rich, is, I just wanted to check to make sure I was correct. It is essentially a student. Another student or a teacher would get a note from students that, uh, give positive, uh, communicate with them. So. Notes that say, yeah, you're a great teacher, that kind of thing, uh, you know. You, anything you can think of positive would, people would hand out to everybody and hand them out and it's. Um, I think if you think about it this way, you know, for some holidays like Valentine's Day and stuff. People would hand out flowers and you could buy flowers that we delivered to people. This is essentially the same thing except a note of praise. Um, for something that people have done.
Got it. Thank you very much.
No problem. So with that, is there any further discussion? Hearing that on the, uh, on the, uh, consent agenda, Mr. Oak?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And then the final thing. On tonight's agenda, I believe, yes. So as everyone knows, I've had discussions, the superintendent, myself and Paul Brandigan have had discussions with the selectmen about. Uh, and the town manager about, um. The senior trip that did not take place for Florida. Um, the selectman put on the agenda, the article that I sent to everybody, which is to reimburse. Um, the families of the trip minus a hundred dollars, uh. Deposit. Um, and just so everyone knows, the reason that minus a hundred dollar deposit was because. In the band trip, that's the amount of money that they lost too. So everybody. Lost out on a hundred dollars. So rather than add band members to this reimbursement, it was decided that. That every, people would lose the hundred dollars. It's sort of a hundred dollar fee, if you will, that happens in most of the pieces. I have been asked and I, I, I clearly said that we put it on our agenda to help support this. Um, just so everyone understands, uh, the town cannot pay that bill. It doesn't have the legal right to pay the bill. Um, but what we can do, and the only thing we can do. Is we can appeal and ask for home rule legislation at the State House, asking them to allow us to pay a bill. Uh, to pay that bill. If that's the case, then what will happen is it will be submitted by our state legislators in both the House and Senate. It would have to be approved and signed by the governor. Uh, once they did that, um, I. Spoke to Bob Nunes yesterday and the money would come out of free cash to pay that bill. Um, and so the point is to be able to reimburse parents for a situation that was, in reality, no one's fault. Um, because everything shut down and, um, you know, students who lost close to a thousand dollars, uh. Probably able to work hard to get reimbursement for these families at about half. Um, the travel agency that we normally went through has since closed. Um, there's still some outstanding pieces with the Attorney General's Office on the insurance side for. And so if you saw, they would sign away the rights to that, to reimburse the town if, if that money came. Um, I've reached out to Representative Lenatra and I have to ask a couple more questions, but she was reaching out to the Attorney General's Office for us. Um, to push them with a decision one way or another. So I think that'll all work out hopefully before the town meeting. Um, so with that, um. Chair will, uh, chair for a motion to, uh, approve and support this town meeting article. Do I hear a second? I, I believe, Mr. Stevens, you said second, but you had your, okay. Um, discussion. Mr. Oakley.
I just wondered, um, Mr. Chair, if you, if you know, um, how long does something like that take to go through? Um, the, the home rule petition and all that.
Sure. So normally what happens, there have been several home rule in the past for a wide variety of things. Um. It has to be, um, this is after the filing period for the legislature. The legislature usually files at, at the beginning of, um. January when they first are, are signed. Um, so what would happen, it would be filed, uh, my assumption would be filed a couple of weeks after town meeting because. All tower meeting articles have to be approved by the attorney general before they're, they're legal. Um. The, so my sense would be this would happen end of April. We're probably looking at midpoint in May for filing. You'll get assigned to committee to review. Um, at that point, they would have to find a house, uh, and senate session, so. Uh, it could happen over the summertime or it could probably even happen in September or October. Because that's the senate, the, the house and senate don't usually meet during the summertime, although it depends on how long they take the budget to handle. Um, I would also add that there, there is a potential that, you know, it needs the majority in both houses. So there is always a potential that it won't pass. Um, because it's entirely up to the legislators what they do. Um, it's a request, um, to do it. I, I know our senator, senators and representatives will file the legislation. Um, it depends on where it's assigned and what happens to it after that. Um, but we can sort of keep watch over it, if you will. And have some discussions about it, um, and go from there. So, uh, Rich, I'd say best case scenario, probably three months. Worst case scenario, anywhere from six to eight. That's the normal life of a home rule petition.
Okay. And, Mr. Chair, if I could ask a follow-up, um, the, I saw the article and the way it's written, we can't. Uh, reimburse these parents until the law is passed, right? Or the bill is passed. So, um. So I guess it's either the attorney general comes through sooner or this, this bill is passed. Is that right?
Correct. We don't have, we don't have the capacity to pay the bills for parents legally currently.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
No problem. And just so everyone knows, what we did was we met, it was the superintendent, Paul Brandigan, myself, uh, uh, Mark Jermaine. And the town manager met with the town's attorney. Um, and that was his legal opinion and he advised us to go this route.
Got it. Thank you.
No problem. Any further questions? Seeing no one, then we'll go to vote. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. And with that, does anyone have anything that they wish to discuss? Um. Hold on one second. Okay, yeah, no, I wanna, uh, can we bring Brian back for one second, Sean? If that's possible. Brian, can you talk about, there was a question. So, uh, it's an important question, um. About, um, is there any district level plans to support students with programs this summer to help with social, emotional, academic? Or actual perceived deficits rather than individual schools addressing it in September. So I, I did think that was an important question to address.
No, it is. We, we have begun discussions on this and planning on this, but there will be supports in place this summer. Uh, for academic and social, emotional for students, that, that students and families can access.
Fantastic. Um, with that, does anyone have anything else before we adjourn the meeting? So our next meeting will be, uh, Thursday, May thirteenth. Um, I will, uh, a couple of things for members, just so everyone knows. Um, I will, not necessarily in that meeting, but, um, soon thereafter, we will deal with the superintendent's evaluation. Um, also, we will deal with, um, subcommittee assignments. Um, and then at the meeting on the thirteenth, just so everyone knows, I will require an executive session. Um, to go over a couple of things. And so I'll list those and let everybody know. Um, with that, um. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
And you made it through to your first meeting, Mr. Lewis. So congratulations. Ms. Janess? And the chair votes aye and thank you, everybody. Um, before we go, we, you know, we'll look forward to seeing everybody. And the students in the new high school. So we, we wish everybody a nice, safe vacation. Enjoy the new high school. Um, and, um, we'll see you, uh, in May. Thank you, everybody.